For December 17th, 2019, at this time Mayor Michael Taylor is detained. He will be here later. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Ryska, could we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor, Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mrs. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Okay, but Mayor Taylor is here. He shall be coming soon. And now if I could please have the approval of the agenda?
Mayor Protem.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
We have a motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the report from our city manager, Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. The mayor asked that I talk very slow in my report so that he doesn't miss a good portion of the meeting, so I'm gonna go real slow.
Thank you.
Anyhow, just a quick update on some of the closures regarding the holiday coming up. In observance of the Christmas holiday, city offices will be closing on Tuesday, the 24th and the 25th, and then the following week on the 31st and January 1st. The refuse collection, however, will be delayed only one day each of those weeks. So on the 25th, there'll be no collection, and it'll be delayed one day from then, and Fridays will be collected on Saturday, and a repeat for the following week. Also, I wanted to remind everyone that for the 27th year, the city's recycling Christmas tree program is, will be underway after the holidays. You can leave your trees at the curb on your normal trash day. Of course, you know, you have to make sure you remove everything from the tree and not have it wrapped in any sort of plastic or anything, but we will collect that. The trees will be tripped, and it's an environmentally friendly way to save some precious space in our landfills. So please take note of that. And also, I wanted to give just a little update on all that our organization has done to help those in need over the past month or so during this holiday season. This year, close to 380 families in Sterling Heights and surrounding communities received assistance through the city's Holiday Assistance Program. Twenty-four local organizations, as well as individuals, participated through sponsorships of local families. The city's still receiving calls from local businesses asking how they can help, so we obviously have a very generous business base in the community. We're very grateful for that. And I wanted to take this moment to commend our community relations staff who coordinate this program every year with the schools and churches and others involved, including businesses. They do a great job, and I appreciate their good work. And also, the 21st Annual Cops and Kids Event was held on Saturday, December 7th, at the 16 Mile Dequinder Target. This annual event is sponsored by the Sterling Heights FOP Lodge, the Sterling Heights Police Department, and of course, Target. This year, 30 officers volunteered their time to help each child spend $120 on toys, clothing, and gifts for their families. Retired Sterling Heights Police Officer Sergeant Randy De Priest and Detective Margaret Wimple have been organizing this fantastic event for the past 20 years, helping over 1,000 children enjoy a very special day. So a shout-out to both of them for their good work with this program. And the Department of Public Works held their annual Ken Stempowski Memorial Food Drive. This year donations included, once again, unperishable food items, monetary donations, and 20 frozen turkeys from Thread Craft in Sterling Heights. The food will be delivered to the Macomb Pantry, where they'll then distribute to another, a number of other pantries throughout the area, serving almost 500 people a day through all the various pantries. And numerous departments and offices throughout the organization also participated by adopting kids and families to brighten their holidays. And I'm very proud of our entire city team for all the good work they've done during the holiday season. And also, the city council members who have contributed and helped fund equipment in the new teen center that's soon gonna be opening up, and we appreciate their generosity as well. And moving on to another topic, I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to talk about a really, what we believe is a very helpful and interesting training program. And we're very grateful that we're able to get through this training. And I'd like to draw your attention to the screen if I could, and I'm gonna walk through this. Some of you may have heard about it. It's called Lean Six Sigma. If you've been in the manufacturing business over the years, that's where this started decades ago, but has now transcended across all sorts of sectors in our economy, including government. So Lean Six Sigma is a method professionals use to streamline processes by eliminating waste while efficiently solving problems. The Lean Six Sigma method relies on a collaborative team effort and combines lean business, lean innovativeness, and Six Sigma to eliminate eight kinds of waste. And they include defects. Believe it or not, whatever job you're in, whether it's local government, retail, manufacturing, engineering, or the like, there's defects in all of our jobs. And this Lean Six Sigma program helps to identify those and to eliminate them. And all of that results in all sorts of other waste, including waiting and not using talent appropriately, wasting transportation resources, wasting inventory, needless motion, extra processing, and so on. Although the roots of Lean Six Sigma are in the manufacturing sector, as I mentioned, it has permeated now all sorts of sectors of business. And Sterling Heights, while we're not the first, we're certainly on the cutting edge of this training being deployed now throughout the organization. So it's all about continuous improvement. We want to improve processes that are not working, which are causing employee frustration, and ultimately, which end up affecting our customers, businesses, and residents alike. So we want to be able to do all that we can to improve under the continuous improvement philosophy and ultimately improve the service to residents and businesses. There's various certifications, including White Belt, Yellow Belt, Green Belt, Black Belt, Master Belt, and Champion. And we have a number of employees that are going through some of these classifications, not all of them. So far, in total, Sterling Heights staff has spent over 1,300 hours in Lean Six Sigma training. And I'm not gonna read through all the names, but I wanted some employees who may be watching to see their names on the screen because they did put a lot of time and effort into this. The White Belt graduates just went through a ceremony at Macomb Community College last week, and it was really a great time to showcase their great work. And the idea behind the training, too, is that each group had to come up with a process, a specific process, in their office or their department that they had to improve. So they would go back after the training and then change that process in some way to make it more effective, more efficient, less wasteful, and so on. So you can see some of the projects here. Streamlining the city development process. Now, this is very involved, but ultimately, this is gonna have an impact on businesses and residents who need a permit of one sort or another. Streamlining and improving the warrant arrest report process. Cutting down customer response lead time. Improved processing of essential service assessments. Limiting library lag time checking out material, and so on. So you can see the ideas to then go back into your department, implement these changes so others can see the benefit of Lean Six Sigma. At our graduation ceremony, we had a number of testimonials from employees. And this was our first graduating class of Lean Six Sigma. We really appreciate the mayor and city council's support of this training. It's just one small component, but a very important component of training offered under what's called the Sterling U, or Sterling University. So that in and of itself is a very unique brand that offers up training to employees all across the organization in all sorts of areas, not just Lean Six Sigma. So I won't bore you with any more of that, but I wanted to certainly give credit to everyone who was involved with that training. And I also, at this time, Mayor Protem Sarowski, would like to call on our Parks and Recreation Director Kyle Langloy to give an update on the exciting project across the street that soon will be opening.
Okay, Mr. Langloy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski, members of council, and all gathered here tonight. It's hard to believe, but we are exactly two months away from receiving the keys to our new community center, two months from today. And while we continue to update everybody on social media, I wanted to share a quick snapshot of what is being done as we speak, as well as publicly address some of the common questions that we continue to see pop up on social media and again in conversation. As a quick note, crews are working seven days a week right now. Almost 18 hours a day, different shifts to try and make sure that we hit our timeline on this. And I mean, certainly, I'm confident that we will hit our timeline to get our keys, and I'll share some information about a grand opening a little bit later in my presentation. A little photo disclaimer, I'm very grateful for Marissa Russo, who's here from Community Relations, who took some of these photos on our behalf, but we are kind of in photography purgatory, if you will, at the community center. There is not very good angles to take, and there's just a lot of drywall and dust. So not great to see, but happy to show where the progress is right now, and we're expecting to see a lot of the finishes starting to take shape here in the next couple of weeks. So that will certainly make for more riveting photos, which we will share on social media as they come along. First, as we get into this, too, I'd like to identify an important distinction with our community center and with this facility, in that it is a community center, not specifically a recreation center. And so a lot of people might not grasp what the difference is, but I'm gonna try and explain that a little bit here. So the building was designed to be a resource for our community as a whole and to fill in the facility gap that we had in relation to our service delivery. So not specifically about any one activity or any one type of activities, but a facility that we needed to properly deliver the services that we do. This building design allows us to carry out our core mission of our department, which is to provide high-quality programs to our residents at a great value. And that's something that our department has been doing now for over 50 years. In essence, this building gives us the opportunity to house under one roof almost all of our programs that we have that have been spread throughout the city in different locations, schools, buildings, fields, a lot of different areas. We can bring it under one roof, making it more efficient, which really is a great example of Lean Six Sigma by way of efficiency. Conversely, in their purest sense, I truly believe that recreation centers are operated more like private health clubs. They have the amenities that are more specific to health club, and they're more active recreation-type facilities such as fitness clubs, fitness facilities. And also, those recreation centers often come with a different revenue model than what we're looking at here with our community center. So after boring you with that, some of you may be asking, well, what can we expect with our new community center when this building opens? So I'm gonna take you through a little bit of a step-by-step. So first, you will see an aesthetically pleasing, comfortable, and welcoming building inside and out. This is taken from a few weeks ago now, as there's been a lot of landscaping that has taken place since, but there's going to be places to sit, places to store items, places to gather, places to admire the architecture and the art of the building. In addition, the community center brings us for the first time since August 2017 back to centrally-located area of the city in the city center complex. So our recreation team and administration will be here conveniently located for resident The community center is going to house five dance and fitness studios. This is a picture of one of the dance studios right now, that will not only support our existing Sterling Stars Dance Program, which has over 300 dancers in it, but it will also cover our adult fitness classes, too. These dance studios and fitness studios will allow us to expand on our offerings, making our lineup more diverse than ever before. These same rooms will also house some of our largest-attended senior classes, like Tai Chi, as you see here, which has outgrown our available spaces at the senior center. An early childhood room will be at the community center to expose our youngest participants and families to the benefits of Parks and Recreation, including a secured toddler-aged play structure that is perfect for ages 2 to 5, right outside the front door. Residents can expect to see evening classes being offered as well, something that has never been done before, to my knowledge, and certainly not within the last 15 years. The community center will have a teen room. Teen room is designed to give an underserved population a place to go and be themselves. This room will encompass study areas, social areas, and a variety of gaming areas, both new and retro, on a drop-in basis. New teen programs and summer camps will take shape as well, and we have already discussed with the library more opportunities to expand our collaboration efforts. The community center will house a seminar room to host community meetings, neighborhood association meetings, youth athletic league meetings, and internal department trainings, including election training, summer camp orientation. This will help take the strain off of areas in the city, in city hall, the library, and school district buildings that are currently being used. The community center will have a community room that will host our city's major indoor special events, including the cultural exchange, Healthy Living Expo, coffeehouse concerts, excuse me, senior center holiday parties, adaptive recreation dances, as well as house absentee ballot processing on all election days. This area can also be rented by Sterling Heights residents, businesses, and community groups only for low-key functions such as business meetings, wedding and baby showers, funeral wakes, and the like. The community center will have two high-school-sized gyms that will host existing programs like baton classes, men's gym, adaptive basketball, senior drop-in pickleball, which outgrew the senior center about two weeks after we opened, adaptive recreation day camp, and games for the Sterling Heights Basketball Club, also allowing us space for new drop-in programs, adult athletic leagues, and so much more. Last, but certainly not least, is an indoor track that measures approximately 1/10 of a mile for anyone looking to achieve their personal fitness goals and are looking for a climate-controlled space to walk or run when the weather turns for the worse. As you can see, we are excited to have a building that will meet the needs of our department in its current capacity and allow us to expand with even more programs and services to our residents. I also wanted to go on record saying that I am aware of the commentary on social media and in day-to-day conversation regarding our lack of a pool that's in this facility and lack of a fitness center. And I'm aware of the disappointment that comes and is related to those omissions, and I understand those disappointments as well. Always happy to go into more detail with people, because I do believe that the more we can educate everybody as to why we made the decisions we made, I'm happy to have those conversations on a one-on-one basis with anybody, and certainly happy to talk about that a little bit more tonight as well. In regards to both amenities, the primary reason for not including these items was available land space, something that we've talked about before. This is the reason why this, these two amenities were not in our plan from the start, and why we were able to work out a deal with the city of Warren so that way we can have the ability for our residents to enjoy a pool and a fitness center at resident and good resident rates. Including these features would have also required us to renovate the current recreation center in Dodge Park, which, as you can see today, that would have, you know, made for a very different look and function of the park. Secondarily, adding these features would have cost the residents a significant amount of additional money in this, in this millage, both on their taxes and really to use the center forevermore. The build-out cost, we expect, would have been approximately $15 to $20 million more to add a pool and renovate the recreation center in Dodge Park, and our operation costs would have doubled as well with additional staff and running pools. Also, having these features would have moved us from a programming-based model, which costs our residents no additional dollars over the fee for programs that they participate in, and would have moved us to a membership-based model, which would have really provided that people would have had to pay annual memberships in the ballpark of around $750 per year. So it would not have been free if we would have had a pool or a fitness center. We would have had to change our funding model and our revenue model. And that is over and above the taxes that are already paid. Also, I want to make sure I mention, too, as we talk through some of these items, it's important to think about the trends in our community and what's happening all around our community. When we look at pools, it's no secret that a few years ago, our partners Utica Schools closed two of their pools because it just wasn't financially feasible to keep them open. They're now gymnasiums. Both Warren and Macomb Townships recently sunk hundreds of thousands of dollars into their pool spaces as well, all things that we took into consideration. When you look at fitness centers, too, just performing a quick Google search, we find that there's well over a dozen fitness and health clubs in Sterling Heights, directly to the north and south of us, in Shelby Township in Warren, and that doesn't include Clinton Township, Rochester, Troy, and so on and so forth. So there's everything from Planet Fitness on the low end to Lifetime Fitness on the high end, everything in between, and we still have more complexes being built by the day as we know L.A. Fitness is coming into town again, another one at 16 and Van Dyke. So the market's very saturated, specialized, it is an area that we don't have expertise in. I thought we would probably run into a losing venture if we went into that direction. In closing, though, I can say that I understand, again, the disappointment that some people have, but more importantly, I can say that we made decisions and found alternate solutions that are truly in the best interest, best financial interest of our residents and the city as a whole. Confidently stand by that sentiment today, as I did over four years ago. Also, what remains true is we have some great things going on here in Sterling Heights. There's a lot of people that are very jealous of what we have going on here, and I'm happy to say that we're at the forefront of Parks and Recreation and quality of life. Also, I want to say, too, that just because our plan right now is what it is, doesn't mean that the door is closed on future Parks and Recreation and Quality of Life initiatives in the city of Sterling Heights. I want to thank the council for allowing me this time to share this update, and would be happy to tour each and every one of you through the community center over the next couple of weeks as we get closer to completion. Also, want to make sure I mention that we do have February 29th, which is Saturday, February 29th, Leap Day, as our grand opening day for the new community center. Invite all of our residents, city council, and other dignitaries out to enjoy that day. More information will be coming out through our website and on social media. We found that there's no more fitting day to celebrate a once-in-a-lifetime building than to have it on a once-in-a-four-year kind of a day. So again, I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Langloy, and we would like to recognize the mayor, who has now joined us, so I turn over the meeting to him. Mayor Taylor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Protem Sarowski, and my apologies for being late, but I thank you very much for filling in for me. I was trying to see, my daughter's Christmas concert tonight started at 6:30, so I appreciate your indulgence in letting me be just a few minutes late tonight. So with that, I think we had the presentation. I walked in on the middle of it, so I apologize, Mr. Langloy. But council, is there anyone that has any questions for Mr. Langloy regarding the community center update?
Actually, I do, Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Mr. Langloy, what do we, so we are now going to be able to rent some of this space as a resident. What about the catering? Do we, are we going to have in-house catering? Is it only gonna be brought in where we have to bring in our own? How would that work?
Ms. Langloy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. Great question. We are currently working on vetting some caterers for the facility. We want to try and streamline that process. Most importantly, it's important to make sure that whoever's providing food is health department-certified and is, you know, able to provide said food. We do not have facilities in the building to cater ourselves or to have a caterer work out of our kitchen, so any caterer that's going to bring food in is going to have to be self-sufficient to bring everything in, keep it warm, and provide, you know, the whole setup from start to finish.
Thank you. No further questions.
All right, council, anyone else? Mr. Langloy? If not, thank you, Mr. Langloy. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, mayor. You might have noticed on the consent agenda this evening, there is a new technology being deployed by the fire department, and with us this evening is a fire chief who's gonna talk a little bit about this really neat technology.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Koshubsky, and any residents here watching. This evening, later this evening, I'm gonna be presenting the 20th Survival Coin, which is another great example of teamwork. And another example of teamwork is item C on the consent agenda, which is where city council and the residents support the fire department with the implementation of technologies and different tools for us to be successful in our job. And that item is to purchase six Stryker Lucas III chest compression machines. So several years ago, we tested one of these. We put them on a rescue truck, which responds to all CPRs, and it got glowing reviews from all the firefighters. They wanted these things as quickly as we could. It's such a hefty price tag. We did our due diligence over the years and went through two different AFG grants that were unsuccessful, and even attempted a grant through the firehouse subs that was unsuccessful. So it was in the capital budget, and now the city is purchasing these excellent pieces of equipment for us. We're gonna continue to pursue grants to get them on all the fire engines, because these will be on the ambulances and one on the rescue truck. But I'd like to give you a couple of examples of what this machine does, and there's a brief video right here that I'll go to. that I'll go to. So these mechanical CPR devices are both good for patient outcome and good for the firefighters and the first responders, and a couple of examples of that. It's quality CPR, it's continual, non-stop, the perfect amount of compressions, the perfect depth of compressions, and it has been tested to be, to show that significant increase in CPR. Not only that, it's, it helps us with long-term care on the ride to the hospital, and there's no interruptions, and as you saw in the, in the video, when you carry people down the stairs during CPR, CPR stops because it can't be continued in those situations. So it's great for the patient, and we should see an increase in outcomes, which are already very successful here in the city of Sterling Heights, as, as our Survivor Coin program will show you, but it's also safe on the first responders. CPR isn't like you see on TV where everything's in pristine situation, so our firefighters are usually in vicarious situations, trying to do chest compressions, back injuries and things like that are common in CPRs and other medical emergencies like that. And it also helps us increase our ability to bring people to the hospital in a, in a better sense of, of recovery. So with that, if you'd like to direct the camera to the front thing, Chief Miller is going to display ours that we have, one of the ones that we're going to be getting with this purchase that we should have by the beginning of the year.
It actually will increase my cardiac output as it increases the pressure from continuous CPR. And our mannequin, turn it on, it's too light here, it actually shows the blood flow to the head, so you can see a cardiac perfusion. Do medical care and treatment such as airway management, IV or medication administration, and it also allows us to start it back up because it's loud. It will record everything that happens with it, and we can use that for some data analysis on our own patient care and outcome, so it's a very useful piece of equipment. It doesn't look like it will fit everybody, but it will. It's more based on bone density versus body mass, so there's a wide variety of patients that this will accommodate. Any questions? Council, anyone, any questions?
Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. My question, is this battery operat-, oh, through the chair to whoever wants to answer my question. Battery-operated, I take it?
It is battery-operated, and just like everything we do, we plan for different contingencies, so it comes with two batteries, and it comes with a wall outlet that we can use in a house for extended period of times, and then it also comes with another adapter so that we can plug it in in the ambulances and transport. So really, this will allow for continuous CPR until it's deemed necessary to stop it, whether it's a change of patient condition or at the directions of a physician.
Thank you, that's my only question.
Anyone else, council? Thank you very much, Assistant Chief Miller, and chief, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation. This is a presentation of the twentieth recipient of the Sterling Heights Fire Department Survival Coin. We have a presentation from our Fire Chief, Chris Martin, Chief Martin.
Again, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Kachubski. As I mentioned earlier, tonight is our number twentieth Survivor Coin, so it's kind of a, kind of a benchmark there. Even though we've had sixty-nine candidates for Survivor Coin, that's sixty-nine people who suffered a cardiac arrest and walked out of the hospital without neurological deficit since July the first of two thousand and thirteen, this will be the twentieth today that came to become a Survivor Coin recipient. This is also one that has been a while. This actually occurred on September the nineteenth of two thousand and eighteen, and so Mr. Daryl Morley was traveling southbound on Shaner, just north of Fifteen Mile, and suffered a medical emergency and veered off the road and ran into a tree. It was not a traumatic accident, so it wasn't the, the running into the tree that caused the problem, it was the, the medical emergency or the cardiac arrest that he suffered that caused him to go off the roadway. There was a doctor in the CVS that we have still not been able to identify, but he witnessed this, and he jumped into action, left the CVS and removed Mr. Morley from the car and started CPR. He also had the helps from our own citizens on patrol, Dino Spatafor, until Engine Four arrived. Engine Four at the time had Captain Rich Werbeck, who is now retired, Lieutenant Cuny, and Sergeant Watson, who took over patient care and started CPR. Squad Two arrived with firefighters Stephen Cluse and Eric Refniz, and then Rescue One arrived with Captain Lulick and Lieutenant Vergowan, also with the assistance of Battalion Chief Doherty. So over the next twenty-five minutes, a lot of things occurred. They did two defibrillations in the first few minutes, and those defibrillations resulted in electrical impulses being restored to the heart but no pulse, so they had to continue with CPR and give cardiac meds at that time, and that resulted in some activity back to the heart, which then again resulted in two defibrillations, and after the fourth defibrillation and a lot of medical care, Mr. Morley's heart was restored with pulse. He was loading the ambulance and rushed to St. John McCombe, and on the way to St. John McCombe, he once again lost his heartbeat, and the firefighter medics began CPR and began more medicine delivery. That resulted in Mr. Morley's heart beating when they dropped him out of the emergency room. At that point, the firefighters, we kind of lost track of Mr. Morley because we didn't think he was doing that good at the time, and in fact, when the accident happened, it was very close to Councilwoman Barb Ziarco's house, and she was there and witnessed the whole thing. So she's been asking where Mr. Morley has been for the last year and a half, so I'm glad we could finally deliver him to, to see you here. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up Mr. Morley and Lieutenant Jeff Vergowan to present the Survivor Coin.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'd really like to thank these gentlemen for their effort, without them I wouldn't be standing here talking, speaking with you guys. I mean, I made a list of all the EMT guys, but I can't pronounce all their names, so I'm not even trying. But you, you really don't appreciate how much value there is to life until you've actually gone through the door, and the fact that they had to hit me four times with the paddles, I guess, they never gave up on me, which I so appreciate, my wife appreciates it, my family appreciates it. All I can say is thank you so much, you guys, it was just absolutely a great effort on your part, thank you.
Again, as just an example of teamwork, I'd like to invite up Mr. Bob Dickerson from St. John McCombe or Ascension Health McCombe to say a few words.
Thank you, Chief Martin, and good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, again, congratulate all of the providers and also the responders that were part of this great care. This, these guys do this every day, from point of nine-one-one through a point of discharge. What a great time of year especially to celebrate something like this. Mr. Morley, I know you had a very extensive stay in the hospital, it was very long, and then post-care also, and I just wanted to say to you, you are truly a fighter and a survivor, and what a great time of year with the support of your family to celebrate that, so thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mayor, before I turn it over to you, I want to let you know that we're working on number twenty-one, hopefully we can have it at a January meeting, but we really see you had a successful teamwork effort at the Planet Fitness at Fifteen and Shaner, where a physician assistant from Mr. Dickerson's hospital was, witnessed a cardiac arrest, took the AED off the wall at the Planet Fitness, and actually had the patient with a pulse before Engine Four got there, so we hope to have that, that great story at next month's council meeting. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Busy corner, Fifteen and Shaner, a lot going on there. Thank you, and thank you for, the Fire Department for being here. Council, open it up, is there anyone that has any questions or want to make any comments about the twentieth Survival Coin?
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Well, I want to congratulate Mr. Morley. I, as a nurse myself, being defibrillated four times is unusual, they usually, the third time is usually three strikes and you're out, so congratulations, I'm glad that you are a fighter and you have survived, it is a wonderful testament to both our firefighters, police officers that were also there, I'm sure, and the team at St. John, which is my first original hospital in Michigan that I worked at, so I have a little special part in my heart for them as well, and congratulations, and thank you all for doing such a great job.
Council, anyone, Mrs. Zarco, sorry.
That's okay, you were late too. I have to tell you, Mr. Morley, I remember that day, I was actually coming home from an errand, and I was actually turning, I was eastbound, and then I turned north on, onto Fifteen Mile, and, and I saw all of our equipment there, this was the first thing that I saw, so the, and then the pole on the ground, not realizing that I think the pole actually hit another car, like it fell on the back end of somebody else's car. So then as I, I could see everything from where I live, I'm right across the street, and, and the activity that was going on, and it was the efficiency, I mean, all of our employees were, were they needed, you know, where, they needed to be there, they were in the right place at the right time, and, and we talk about this all the time, but when you actually witness it, it, it really brings everything to home how important it is, and, and how well-educated our, our Fire Department is, our Police Department, our, and our CERT members, and so, you know, when you see it all, it's worth it, it really is worth it, and to see you walk in today is, it's really joyful. And I have to say, I kept asking Chief Martin if he had heard anything about you, do you know anything, do you know anything, didn't, and it was like every time I saw the pole on the ground, I thought about it and I'd ask him again, because, so as long as the pole was on the ground, I was asking about you, and then they put the pole up, and we kind of forgot about it. But thank you for being here, I wish you well, Merry Christmas, I mean, I'm sure you're having a happy holiday, so that's, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zarco, anyone else, council? Just another great job by the entire team, you've said the word teamwork a few times tonight, chief, and that's what it is, so Mr. Morley, it's, it's great to have you here, and it's great to have the tremendous Fire Department that we have, Police Department, our dispatchers, and the local hospitals that, that take over the care after our Fire Department starts it, so a big, great, a, a big team effort and a great job for everyone involved, one more big round of applause. So with that, chief, we have another presentation tonight. We do have another presentation tonight. We do have this. Another swearing-in, so I'll hand it back over to you, Chief Martin.
Good evening again, Mayor Taylor, members of council, I'm pleased to present to you two more, or two of the newest members of, of this great team that we've talked about so many times tonight. To my immediate right is Joshua Daley, he's thirty-four years old, he grew up in Sioux Saint Marie, Michigan, where he attended South Area High School, he wanted to move to the warmer climate of Macomb County, so here he is. He's got a lot of family in the crowd tonight, including his son Luca and his daughter Addison, who I think we've heard Addison a little bit tonight, she's happy to be here as well, as well as his girlfriend. He attended Macomb Community College and recently obtained his medic license, and this is going to be his first job in the fire EMS field. Next to him is Michael Palmasano, he's twenty-seven years old, he grew up mostly in Macomb Township, and he graduated from Dakota High School. He went to the Fire Academy at Macomb Community College, he attended Dorsey Business School in Madison Heights to get his medic license. His previous two years was, was with Detroit EMS, and four years prior to that was with suburban EMS. So, Mayor, if you'd let me to, I'd like to bring them over here and sort them in, so.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joshua Daley.
I, Michael Palmasano.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter.
That I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
That I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
And I will discharge duties of my office to the best of my ability.
I will discharge duties of my office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Mayor, council, if you'd like to come congratulate these young men? Mayor Taylor, I'm going to turn the floor over to Josh, he's got a few words to say. Okay.
Mayor, council, thank you very much for your time this evening. I just want to express my, my gratitude for the opportunity to not only start, I hope to finish my career serving the wonderful city of Sterling Heights, thank you again.
Thank you. Michael, anything to add?
Well, what he said. I've, I've spent the last several years working towards this, so I'm also very excited to be here. I went through many interviews this year, and I'm just excited to be at one of the best fire departments and cities in the state of Michigan, you guys have a very good reputation here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, it's, it's your reputation now, and so, so good luck. Chief, anything else?
I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Okay, council, any comments, any questions, anybody? If not, we just, you know, I, I mean that jokingly, but also sincerely, is that we have this great reputation, we've had a lot of people come through this department and they continue to maintain it, it's, whether it's our Police Department, our Fire Department, or any of our other city departments, our DPW, City Hall, and hopefully the same with our city council here, is that we expect a lot because we've, we've just grown accustomed to that, and the residents and citizens of Sterling Heights have too, so we, we are very proud to have you, we wish you Godspeed, good luck out there, keep us safe, keep yourself safe, and thank you for your service to this great city. So congratulations, I know you guys got some family, family here, maybe you'll go celebrate, so one more round of applause, and chief, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, we will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is an ordinance introduction, and this is to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. We have a presentation from our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Varney, Mrs. Varney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel, and Mr. Kachubski. I'm here tonight to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance. The budget is normally amended twice each year, once in December and once towards the end of the fiscal year. This amendment primarily carries forward unspent funding for projects that were approved in a prior year but were not completed until this year. It also recognizes new grants and items that have come before council since the budget was adopted. In the general fund, the budget contributes eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand to fund balanced reserves, and this contribution decreased about a hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand from the original budget due to the carryforward of the prior year unspent encumbrances, the cost of supplemental snow services, and increases to the budget for the 2020 census campaign and the fire staffing study. In the other city funds, the budget was adjusted by twenty-point-eight million, but again, this is primarily carrying forward funds from previously approved projects. Eight-point-one million is for unspent road projects from last year, including the reconstruction of Merrill Road, Nineteen Mile, and Utica Road. Two-point-three million is to reappropriate funds for parks improvements related to recreating recreation. One-point-three million is to reappropriate projects for the local development finance authority, and this includes sectional concrete repair for Sterling Drive and signage for Center Drive and Sterling Ponds. And finally, a little over nine million is to reappropriate unspent capital project funds, and this includes funds for the construction of the new DPW facility, the city sidewalk gap program and repair program, as where, well as the carryforward of funds for the city campus renovations. All of the budget amendments are detailed in the provided council packet. Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading of this ordinance, which is- Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading of this ordinance, which is scheduled for adoption at the January 7th meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Varney, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Not counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2019-20 fiscal year.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
No, I think it was explained very well to us.
Counsel, anyone else?
Neither.
With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Varney. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Shea?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I want to speak on Consent Agenda C, the Lucas III chest compression system for Sterling Heights Fire Department. I liked the presentation tonight, and I see the cost is $98,000 and change. Question I have for the city, what is the plan of, how many do they want to buy for the, for the community? That's the only question I have. I like the idea that you have them and everything. I just was curious how many, because four or five fire stations, and I don't know how many trucks you want to put them on. If you can, later in the meeting or now, if you can answer the question, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shea. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Yes, sir?
Number G, what's a tank wagon? And, in the lawsuit with the police department on in, and, what's the other one? I thought there was two of them in there. Was in? Huh, can't find it. Well, there's two of them about the police department, lawsuit. That's all there is.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Not counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kaczyuski.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported, with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is a consideration item to consider approval of memorandums of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and Local 1557 of the International Association of Firefighters, MAP Supervisory Employees Union, and MAP Technical Office Union. We have a presentation from City Manager Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll briefly summarize each of these three MOUs, and then be happy to address any questions there may be. The first MOU pertains to the CBA between the city and the fire union, and it provides, prior to this MOU, that fire captains only are eligible for promotion to the rank of battalion chief. With the January 2020 retirement of a current battalion chief, there are no eligible, qualified, or interested fire captains to fill the vacancy. The city and fire union agree that in the absence of eligible and qualified fire captains, then lieutenants, who meet the qualifications for promotion to battalion chief should be considered. But unfortunately, the CBA does not allow that to happen, so the memorandum of understanding before you this evening provides the language that would make that possible. So that is MOU number one. The second MOU pertains to the city and the Supervisory Employee Union Group. Effective July 1, 2018, the duties and responsibilities for managing the offices of facilities, maintenance, and purchasing were combined under the job classification Purchasing/Facilities Maintenance Manager. And that was codified, if you will, in the 2018 through the 2022 CBA between the city and this union. At that time, when the agreement was approved, the city was still at the planning phase for the $20 million investment that's going to be starting up very soon in all of our city center campus facilities. It is also prior to the Recreation Community Center being built across the street and the new DPW facility as well. Over the course of the past 18 months, it has become apparent that the proper administration of the two offices is extremely taxing for one administrative officer. Although the facility upgrades alone merit significant time and attention, the scope of the facility's maintenance has expanded with exterior building maintenance taking on a greater focus, including seasonal snow removal and landscaping, which we talked about at a few meetings ago. In order to put city management in the best position to succeed in both of these critical operational areas, a decision has been made to divide the current purchasing facilities manager position job classification back to the prior two, which includes a position entitled Facility Maintenance Director and a Purchasing Manager. Should be noted that historically, the city has had these two positions separate. In order to recognize the two administrative positions within the current CBA, city met with the Supervisory Employees Union to negotiate the MOU. That's before you this evening. And accordingly, the current Purchasing Facilities Maintenance Manager, Jared Bodine, would assume the new classification of Facility Maintenance Director, and there would be a recruitment in 2020 for a new purchasing manager. So the union has signed the MOU and ratified it, and this is before you for consideration this evening. And then the last MOU is between the city and the MAP Technical Office Union, and this pertains to full-time employees hired after July 1, 2015. The current CBA provides a schedule of PTO, or paid time off, based upon a 37 and 1/2 hour regular week. However, the union has three members who work a 40-hour week, two of whom have been hired since the CBA took effect. In order to provide an equitable allocation of PTO to these employees working a 40-hour week, city and the union met, negotiated the MOU before you this evening, which provides proportionally more time to those working a 40-hour week in comparison to those working the 37 and 1/2 hour week. So, for example, this would equate to four hours more PTO based on one year of service and increasing incrementally over the PTO years of service schedule. The provision of additional PTO for these employees working a 40-hour week is consistent with other bargaining units and their related CBAs. And with all of this in mind, we are respectfully requesting that the mayor and city council approve the three MOUs that are before you this evening.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we do have three suggested actions tonight. Anyone who'd like to make a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and Local 1557 of the International Association of Firefighters, AKA Sterling Heights Firefighters Association, amending the 2018-2022 collective bargaining agreement to make qualified lieutenants eligible for promotion to the rank of captain.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I think it was clearly explained to us. I have no issue with this at all.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Suggested action number two. Anybody want to make that motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Swarovski.
Resolved to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and MAP Supervisory Employees Union, amending the 2018-2022 collective bargaining agreement to reflect the newly created Facilities Maintenance Director and Purchasing Manager job classifications.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I have several questions through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, before 2018, these were separate positions in the budget?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that's correct, Councilmember Radke.
Is there a difference in the pay now that we're separating them back again than what they were paid before 2018? Are they going to be paid more as separate positions, or are they, as being saved, paid basically what they were going to be paid before the contract was amended in 2018 or created?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Radke, the pay for the facilities construction director will be a higher level pay than the manager, and that's outlined in the MOU. Bear with me, I'll turn to that page. The salary for the purchasing manager, however, does not change.
I guess I, my point is, and what I'm curious about, is we separate, we combine them to, I guess, save money, but we found that it was not an efficient use. It's just too big of a job for one person. We're separating them again. I just want to make sure that if we're separating them again, we're not suddenly raising the pay of one significantly over what we were paying to have two separate positions in 2017.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Radke, the pay differential between a manager and a director in this particular case is approximately $11,000. Considering the scope of the facilities, $20 million in various upgrades at city center campus, $20 million at the DPW facility, and approximately $50 million in total with all the recreating recreation facility enhancements, and the need, as we mentioned, for enhanced maintenance as well, we think the change or upgrade to a director level for that particular position is certainly warranted.
I have one final question then. How does this affect next year's budget in the sense that, I know that we were supposed to bring on more employees, hopefully if we had the funds, will we be cutting a different employee, or do we think we can find the money for this through other accounts, I guess?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Radke, it's a good question. The forthcoming budget is under development. We fully expect to have the position funded without the need to compromise any other positions or those that we might have been considering above and beyond this. And we'll show all that and explain all that, and it'll certainly be highlighted during the budget hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Okay, thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Zarco.
Yes, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. When will the actual promotion take place? Is that tomorrow as far as the, as Mr. Bodine's becoming the director?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, that's a good question. It's effective immediately, but we have to figure out the payroll period, so I'm not sure if it's effective tomorrow. It'd certainly be the next payroll. With respect to the purchasing manager, that's obviously going to take months to get through that recruitment process.
And I have to say that I know that once the economy started turning around, one of our goals was to actually fill positions that at one time in this were combined. So, I'm actually glad that we're, you know, we might have an additional employee on staff, so I think this is a good move.
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Or the third suggested action. Is there anyone who has a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and MAP Technical/Office Union, amending the 2018-2022 collective bargaining agreement to allot paid time off to employees working a 40-hour work week.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this item?
I think it was well explained, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider nominations to city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, this is a planning commission opening. This has a mayoral power of appointment to a term ending June 30, 2021. Planning Commission, obviously, is one of our most important boards, and I have a good idea on this, but I would appreciate the next. This is a difficult time of year with it being the holidays, so if we could postpone this to the, I think it's January 7, 2020 council meeting, that would definitely give me enough time to get a nomination on. So I would entertain a motion to postpone to the January 7, 2020.
So moved.
Supports, been moved and supported, with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda, and we will move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda?
On your cable channel, Channel 10. Can you show more what's going on in the city than all the bids going in? It's all bid for this or bid for that. You know, show some action. What's going to be in built, or what's not being built? Closing roads, something like that? And then plus two, 15-mile road, the railroad tracks. It's bad, real bad. It's got to be cleaned up. And, let's see, what else? There was, oh, the ambulance service. Me and a friend of mine was arguing. He says, Warren, it's free. I said, for Sterling Heights, you got to pay for it. So, I'd like to know if we do pay for it. Because in Sterling Heights, we bought the ambulance, we're paying for the crew. We get a discount if we have to go to the hospital? I'd like to know. That was it. And there was one more thing, but damn, I can't remember. Have a good one. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else under Communications from Citizens? Mr. Shea?
Good evening, mayors, city council residents. First, I want to say the front steps look really nice, and I like the changes over between the city hall and the police station. Looks, they're looking good. And to get this in quick, I oppose the DIA mileage going on the ballot if it's going to, if they're going to pass it. I think it's just a waste of money. That's my opinion, so they're still discussing that. I have a real concern. I was, I voted for your Safe Street mileage, the renewal. This is your Fall 2019 magazine. I must have been asleep or something, because I couldn't believe this when I read this. We're building a cricket field? It says, "The first ever cricket field in Dog Park." I like the Dog Park. If we're going to build a cricket field, let's build a polo field too. Why, we don't play, I don't know who plays cricket. I definitely don't play polo. How much is this going to cost? I went on your park site trying to find this. It said it's going to be in Delia, but it's not listed. Are we still going to build it, or is it canceled? That's crazy. I can't believe that you're building it. When I read it, I thought maybe it was a misprint, but I was told it wasn't. And regarding your site across the street, I never commented before. Should have saved more trees there and across the street at the parking lot by the senior building. And back in October, I did go in your building. I had permission, I took some pictures and stuff. Once I posted them, man, I didn't open my email until last week. I got emails from the contractor telling me if I step on the property or in the building again, I will, they'll call the police or get their attorneys after me. The guy gave me permission. I didn't know I couldn't post the pictures. And I asked the one gentleman there, I said, "What happened?" He said, "Well, a city employee got really upset because I posted them, and they were getting so many calls regarding the swimming pool." I'm opposed to the swimming pool. I don't think it's a good idea, but I like the exercise equipment. I wouldn't have voted for that building. All we have is a bigger senior building with more rooms. I just think it's going to be a complete waste of time. And I hope the general contractor spends more time building the building instead of looking after what I do. Building was supposed to be done in December. Now it's February 29 or maybe March, who knows when it's going to get finished? I, I just hope, we have bells, we have bells in the building, but we don't have any whistles. I was, I was really in support of it before, but after what I found out and stuff, and after the attitude of some of the people, I find it to be a big waste of money. I don't think we're going to get our bank. I'd never go into the senior building, and I don't think I'm going to be using the new community center that much neither. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shea. Anyone else? Mr. Jefferson?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. Even though I'm injured, I still made it down here. That's just for those folks on social media. I don't know if you guys noticed, but we almost had the old Jerry back there. Almost had him back. Mr. Vanderpoel, could you tell us the hours, the approximate hours that the community center is going to be open? I believe that's important for a number of reasons for the people in this here community. Awesome, Mr. Vanderpoel, we got those steps out front. As I mentioned, I am injured. Is there going to be handrails on that thing? Because it seems like down the middle could be some handrails. Another thing with the social media outlets, Mr. Vanderpoel, there's been some discussion about what's going to happen to the some discussion about what's gonna happen to the senior center once the community center is, is open. Could you go into some kind of explanation of what's gonna happen with the senior center? Is it gonna stay open? Is it gonna close? Are they gonna have later hours now? Earlier hours now? Could you explain that? Um, I believe that's it for you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Uh, Ms. Ziarco, um, can you explain to us if St. Blaise still has their collections going on for the less fortunate people that we have in this community like they always do? And can you tell us the, the weeks that they're gonna be open for the less fortunate people in this here community? Or if the rest of you guys some kind of church or outlet for that? Could you please let us know? That's another question, Ms. Ziarco. Is the new community center at times like this gonna be open for the less fortunate people in our community that might happen to be out in the cold? Uh, Mr. Yanis, I don't know if you noticed tonight, but there was two more firefighters hired. There was no colors and no women. I don't know why you didn't ask that question. Are we getting to those folks? Because a few years back, it was a big push here for the LGBT community, the colors. I don't know if we're offering those people positions or not, but this side was saying, hey, we are looking at the best people. That's who we want to hire. So I wanna take that off the table, because I know you wanna hire the best people, but are we really looking at the best people? Can you answer that question? Yeah. I believe that's it for tonight. And everyone else have a good holiday season, and we'll see you on the other side. Bye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else? If not, I'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything?
Mayor, I can comment quickly on some questions that came up. First, with respect to the equipment for chest compressions, the Lucas system. We're purchasing five of those, so they'll be in our five frontline apparatus at each of our five stations. That is the plan for now, where we don't have a plan to expand it, but that's not to say we wouldn't in the future. There was a question regarding tank wagon deliveries. That's a nomenclature used in the fuel delivery industry. That is how we purchase our fuel. They typically come in two delivery systems, either a semi-truck type thing, or more of what they refer to as a tank wagon. The good news with that, our net cost, we don't have to pay taxes on a gallon of gas, is approximately $1.62, so it's quite reasonable based on today's fuel prices. In addition, a couple other comments that came up. I will talk to our community relations director about cable channel programming, and we'll see what we can do to expand the lineup there. Of course, we do a lot more programming now on social media, which is become the preferred method of viewing city programming, but we will take another look at that. The 15-mile railroad tracks, we had a lot of complaints on that. It's Conrail's authority. Unfortunately, the city can't go in and tear that up. However, we have made a formal request to Conrail for funding. We believe they will fund and fully improve that crossing in the next construction season. At least, that's the preliminary information they have given us. There was a question regarding Warren ambulances, and the fact that they may be free and you have to pay for ours. Well, first of all, City Warren has a millage rate that's specifically tied to their ambulances. I'm, I'm sure that they also bill their insurance companies. I'm not sure about that, but I'm 90% certain they do. I would be surprised if they didn't. The City of Sterling Heights, when we have an ambulance run, we do bill insurance companies. That's Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance companies. So the resident themselves do not have to pay unless there is no insurance, and then we also have a hardship case to consider for those that may not have the ability to pay in those very few cases. There was a question regarding cricket. It's a very popular sport now. The city has been providing cricket programming now for a number of years. The fields we use are overbooked, so this field by the Dog Park will be certainly in high demand and undoubtedly a big success. With respect to trees on the city campus with all the new projects, when the projects are completed, we will have planted hundreds of new trees compared to the number of trees on site before the projects. The handrails on the steps outside are on back order. We have a temporary rail on one side to meet the code and to provide safe traversing for visitors, so the new rails, when they come in, will be installed quickly. The senior center hours are not changing. The programming's not changing. If anything, we'll be able to expand some of the programming in the senior center, because right now, they're overbooked because of the high demand at the senior center. We do participate as a community, various churches, with the Warming Center, Empress, which rotates around the county. I think next up, it will be at St. Blaise. I'm not sure if it's next week or the following week, but it's certainly coming up, and it rotates across the county and certainly at various locations in Sterling Heights. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Very comprehensive. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Kschubski, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counsel, open it up for reports or new business. Anything? Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, regards to the cricket field, I think it had to be at least 20 years ago. We were driving down 15-mile road by Nelson Park in the fire truck. Quite often, my colleagues at the fire department and I would lament about how when we were kids, we used to throw our ball glove on the, on the bike and grab our bat, and we'd go and we'd play baseball all day, and kids didn't do that anymore. As we're driving by Nelson Park, there's a bunch of kids out there playing ball at Nelson Park, and we pulled the fire truck in, and lo and behold, they're playing cricket. And I'd never seen a cricket match before, and this was at least 20 years ago. So people have been playing cricket here in Sterling Heights for a long time. Today, I received an email, and through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, I apologize for not giving you a heads up on this, but it's an email from Eagle, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. They are starting a grant program, $1.5 million worth of grants, up to $150,000 for communities that have both curbside and drop-off recycling. I know we've had some issues with recycling, so I'd certainly like to see the city apply for the grant. I will share this email with my colleagues. There is a webinar on the grant process that we can all watch for free, so I will be sending that email out if you haven't already received it. To Mr. Jefferson's issue, it's unfortunate that we're getting very few applicants for both police and fire. You know, it's not just people of color, LGBTQ. We're just having a hard time getting people to apply, period. I think City Warren has something like 12 or 15 positions open right now that they can't fill in their fire department. I have had conversations with Mr. Vanderpoel about our hiring, and I also specifically about the LGBTQ community. So we have talked about that, and that is on my radar, and I appreciate you bringing that up, sir. And then, again, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, I'd just like an update on what's going on with our veterans memorial.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Yanis, as you know, that area between city hall and police has been completely reconstructed. The construction's still ongoing. All the monuments have been moved to a safe enclosure that the city has, and will be touched up and polished up some. And then they will be reinstalled in a new location in that area, in that vicinity, I should say, which I think the community will take great pride in. It'll be a much better display. It'll be lit. It'll be an area where people will wanna congregate, and it will be done before the Memorial Day Parade.
Thank you.
Mrs. Zarco?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, I'm gonna start out with some happy news, and we just did have Sterling Christmas, and I have to tell you, it was a great event, enjoyed by so many people in the community. And I know when I was leaving, and the park was still filled with people, and I happened to be with some friends, and they said, it looks like a Hallmark movie. I mean, how much better, you know, compliment can you receive than, just when you saw the activity and the kids skating, the fire pits going, the big snow globe. It was a wonderful event. Can't thank the staff enough for all that they did to make it possible, and certainly the residents for coming out and enjoying the evening with all of us, because it was really, it was a very nice evening. Mr. Jefferson, I'm gonna go with some of the comments that you made tonight. First of all, I think Mr. Vanderpoel, why have you been paying more attention in church than I was the other day? Because he remembers the dates of the warming center at St. Blaise, and I couldn't remember if it was the week of January, the 19th, or, or January, the 26th. But it is at the end, end of January. But you could, I mean, there's always a need, and it's almost, it's like networking. If you have something or, that you think somebody else can use, you can pick up the phone and call St. Blaise. You can pick up the phone and call Salvation Army. There, you know, and you could just drop off whatever you have. I go through closets on a regular basis, and if I see a coat in the closet, I'm thinking, it's not gonna keep anybody warm in the closet, so I might as well take it where somebody can actually stay warm. So it's always a matter of networking. You know, there might be a need, and then you find the source for whatever that need is. Lately, I, I work at, I volunteer at the Pope Francis Center, which is in downtown Detroit, and it's next to the Detroit, University of Detroit Law School. And, and it's like in the basement of what is now St. Peter and Paul Church. And I know that right now, they have a campaign that's going on, and I can't remember. I think it's PFC.org, and you can, for sale. And it was like, if you buy a hat, it's like it's a Carhartt hat. You buy one, and then Carhartt donates one to somebody that needs it. So there's always something going on like that. At the Friends of Foster Kids, we, there was a need there for some of the things that, you know, it was clothing, jackets, or whatever. We have one of the largest screen printing manufacturers in the city made the connection there, where they had a surplus, and they took it to the Friends of Foster Kids. So there's always something going on, and it's like, it's almost like, I don't wanna say it's a job, because it's not. It really is just a good feeling to know that we can call people within the city that have, are able to help other people, whether it be in the city or somewhere else. So that's pretty much how it's handled. And I know that St. Blaise will be looking for somebody to, donations for food, and certainly socks, and hand warmers, and toe warmers, all of those things. And, and those are just all the time. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone in Sterling Heights a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We're not gonna see you again until the New Year, so I hope you and your family have a wonderful holiday. More than that, I wanted to answer a few questions residents posed. I second my colleague, Mr. Yanis, on trying to create a diverse fire department. I know this is gonna be a strategic plan this year. We've been talking about internally. We're working very hard to try to recruit both minority candidates, diversity candidates, and just trying to make the fire department look more like the community in which it serves. It's a complicated process, and lately, we've not been having the applications that we'd like just generally. We're having to go out more and more. I guess public service doesn't appeal to people as much as it used to, because we're having a lot of difficulty recruiting successful candidates. So that's something that we're really focused on internally. To echo Mr. Vanderpoel's comments on the railroad crossings, I've been contacted by several residents this year about trains that had blocked the 15-mile train track, and I was unhappy to learn that the city can do nothing to prevent this or make the trains move faster. They're actually governed under federal trade rules, so if the trains and the tracks are bothering, you get to contact your member of Congress, or your, or your senator, you know, Gary Pierce or Debbie Stab, and have to talk with them about it. We have absolutely no authority, and a case in the Sixth Circuit actually said that cities cannot find them, move them along, urge them along. We have absolutely no authority to regulate trains. So there's that. With the cricket field, maybe surprising, but I'm often surprised by how much our recreation department goes out of its way to, to serve the citizens here. When I first ran for office, I complained about the skate park. I thought there'd be nobody using it. It's a big waste of concrete, and I have been amazed by how wrong I was. I go out there on almost any day of the week when it's nice out, and you'll have kids and adults who act like kids, I guess, having a great time out there. You know, we won an award for it, and I, I am so happy that I was wrong, because I thought it'd be a big hole in the ground. Instead, it gets a tremendous amount of use from the community. And whenever I go out there and talk to people, and we could still add a few more things, some more benches for people to sit at, and we're always doing continuous improvements here. But whenever I go out there and, and just, just talk to the people, they tell me, it's an amazing skate park. They're so happy to have it. They use it all the time. And I know this year, we actually instituted some, some younger children's hours, just to make sure everybody has a chance to really use the facility, because when there's big kids and little kids out there, sometimes you don't wanna have accidents happen, and you wanna make sure everybody has a chance to use the facilities. I also wanted to commend Parks and Recreation for the excellent Sterling Christmas they had last week. It really was an amazing time. It, it's a special time of year, and when you get to see so many of your fellow residents out there on the, in front of the bonfires, and on the carriage rides, and the carousel, and even the, the wonderful ice game we have now. It really is amazing. I think it gets bigger every year. We keep on adding things to it. It still gets busier and busier, so I know it's a great time. If you didn't come this year, hopefully you'll join us next year. And with that, Merry Christmas to my colleagues, Merry Christmas to the people at home, and I hope you have a wonderful New Year. We'll see you after the holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to say that I am thrilled with the entrance way to the city hall, the new entrance way. The stairs, the steps are so much safer and wider and less steep, and lit extremely well. I, I just, I couldn't be more pleased about that entrance way. That being said, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, the, the water construction project going on in 15 near Dodge Park, do we know how long that is gonna be impairing 15-mile?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, can you refresh my memory? 15?
Just today, some water main work is being done, so on 15-mile near Dodge Park.
I don't have the answer, but I will get it for you first thing in the morning.
Okay, no problem. And also, speaking of construction and intersections, my favorite intersection, Moravian and Shaner. So it appears as though some improvements have been done in that intersection, albeit I don't think we did the construction, because it's really not the best, I don't think. I'm, maybe it's because it was at the end of the season, and they're not finished, but there's no striping, so people still don't know that there's a left turn lane there. Are there going to be striping before? I mean, I know, I know my light's not coming till the spring, but that intersection improvement does nothing without striping and instruction to the drivers.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, I know this is high on your list. I get updates on this almost daily. The, the lanes will be installed yet this year, so we're told by the owner. So, you know, we're gonna have to give them a drop dead date, and if we have to, we will go in and do the lanes and charge them accordingly.
Well, I think the lanes have been...
I, I don't mean the lanes, the lane markings.
The lane markings.
Lane markings is what I meant. In addition, the pile of concrete that's sitting out on the corner, that will be removed within a matter of days, or we will remove it and charge the, the owner of that site. The good news is, we are dealing directly with the owner now and no longer his contractor. I know it's been slow going. It's been a very difficult project.
Right. And I appreciate that. I just, I think, I'm, I'm hoping that the asphalt that they put down isn't the final product. And if you get a chance, maybe you could ride over there, take a look at it. And with that, I wanna wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, my colleagues, all the residents at home. Thank you for all you do, and we will see you next year.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So a couple of questions first to, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. We are going to be restoring the veterans memorials. Will there be a ceremony when those are reinstalled, or are we going to just wait for Memorial Day weekend, or week, or whatever?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Potem Sarowski, we will wait until the Memorial Day weekend. We need all that time. It's gonna, we have to get all the landscaping in. We have to get lighting in. So it's gonna take us those spring months to get it done. But the big debut, including the mural, will be at the Memorial Day Parade.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I know that Mr. Adregna, who made, created quite a few of those memorials, will be very thankful up in heaven for that. He's a wonderful man. To answer a couple of questions that were from the, the audience to Mr. Jefferson, many churches do have, yes, that we, there's lots of collections, but how do the residents get them? You go, if anyone needs to go to, I know specifically, I speak of Catholic churches, but I know all the other churches have societies, that if you walked in as a person of need, they will find ways to help you. They will help you with both finances, clothing, food, if you ask, especially during the Christmas holiday season. It's, they, there are many avenues for that. So I know that St. Lawrence, my church, does special collections, and we collect every week at, at Mass for both food and whatever people need. So if anyone is in need... So if anyone is in need, please, if you even need to speak to somebody, you can call me, call another member of council here, and we can help direct you to where you can receive whatever you may need at this time, even help with your bills. And then a special comment, amazing, Mr. Radke was wrong about the skate park. I'm teasing you, Mr. Radke. I see that skate park every day. I drive by it, and it is packed, even in the coldest of cold. And I'm talking about the concrete skate park, not the ice skating, although that has been wonderful as well. So I do think that that has been a great addition, and I am always happy to see how well our amenities are being used. Also, I'd like to commend Mr. Langloy for his award for being, for his park setup and management. He's receiving a statewide award, so that is wonderful. We, as a city, we received an award last, two years ago now, for our parks, but this is an additional award just for Mr. Langloy. And then finally, to everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hug your families tight, say a prayer for the troops. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski, and Mrs. Koski.
Thank you. This evening, we heard that the rec center is scheduled to open February 29th, so I have a question through the chair to probably Mr. Vanderpool. Have we done any hiring as far as rec center staffing is concerned? Or is this something that we'll be posting within the next few months? And if so, if someone is interested in a position, where would they find it? I'm assuming it would be on the website. And an update, if, Mr. Vanderpool, if you could, give us an update regarding the status of the two remaining recycling centers. Have we thought any more about doing any staffing there, or are they scheduled to be closed? Or is that something that we're going to be talking about at our strategic planning? And another request is, when we have a closing of a road example, Councilman Schmidt's favorite intersection, Shaner and Moravian Red Run, when work is being done by an owner, property owner, can we maybe post the closing of a road on either Channel 5 or 10 so that people are aware? As an example, that particular intersection, road closed, somebody coming in off of Red Run, Red Run turns to Moravian with the curve. If you come in off of 14 mile down Red Run, turn onto Moravian, because it's the other part of the road, the road is closed. You're gonna get a ticket, and that ticket is like about $132. So I think that we should kind of warn residents so that they know that the road is closed, that they don't try to enter there. And also, I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right. Thank you very much. Mrs. Koski, do you want responses right now? You want to get back to?
No.
Okay. Well, I just wanna say again, thank you to our Mayor Protem for taking care of the meeting for me in the very beginning, so I could spend a few moments watching my daughter sing tonight. We've all said Merry Christmas to each other and to the residents, and so I'd say it to my family, to your family, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you, whatever you celebrate. As Mrs. Zarco says, we celebrate Christmas in our house, and to whatever you're celebrating, make it a joyous season, and we hope that you have a very happy and healthy New Year. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
So moved and supported. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.